Nancy, would you, first, would everybody please make sure their phones are off? I so often do that, so thank you. And Nancy, would then you do a whole part?
Here. Dy is excused, Jenema is on her way, LaPointe.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Hollinger.
Here. At this time, we're open for limited public comments. Anybody?
Go ahead. You were up first and you're closer.
Don't fight over the podium.
I'm Gail Trill. I live at 7174 Deepwater Point. And I have my statement to make to the board. I'd like to remind everyone here that we're all neighbors and we all care about the future of Acme Township. We must assume goodwill on everyone's part, even if we don't always agree on the details of our future. I would like to present a few suggestions to solve some of the problems we're facing together, which are detrimental to our progress as a township. This is not a personal attack on anyone, but rather an attempt at problem solving. Conflict so apparent at recent township board meetings demonstrate that board action is necessary at once. My first suggestion is that if there is to be no qualified, trained office administrator, the supervisor, who appears to have taken over the duties of the administrator, should have some management training. Since the supervisor's professional experience with the phone company was in dismissing employees, I assume he has had little or no recent training in personnel matters, or in problem solving, or in office administration. In such training, the manager learns modern techniques of leadership and administration. Training can include instructing managers and workers to eliminate racist and sexist behaviors in the workplace. Further, training includes conflict resolution, which can add off situations like the disasters we're experiencing presently. Second, I respectfully urge that the supervisor take a class in Robert's Rules of Order. Learn the process of correctly running a meeting and run each meeting according to the accepted rules. Finally, the dilemma that presently exists, which has manifested in one way, is a conflict between the treasurer and the acting clerk must be resolved at once, regardless of any training the supervisor needs to have. The solution, while unpleasant, is clear. The treasurer was duly elected to a four-year term. The treasurer is a trained accountant who had additional instruction in accounting for our type of township governance. The acting clerk was appointed to fill a vacancy created by the resignation due to health issues of Chris Bassett, the elected clerk. After some time in office, Mrs. Dy, who I see is not here today, and I'm sorry, asked that a bookkeeper be hired to teach her to do her job and/or assist her until she learned how to do it. I note that that same assistance was not provided to Mrs. Bassett. In addition, I note that the clerk's deputy, who held a deputy position in previous administrations, could not or would not teach the new clerks to do their job. Perhaps she too should be further educated on how townships work. The board authorized $10,000 of tax dollars to hire the additional person, Mr. Drennan, and to date has used nearly all of the authorized funds, or perhaps all of them. For whatever reasons, the acting clerk still has not been able to, or has not chosen to learn how to do her job. Thus, according to discussion at the January 7th, 2014 board meeting, the taxpayers of Acme Township soon face additional payments to Mr. Drennan so he can continue to do the clerk's job. He is neither elected by the people, nor appointed by the board to fill the clerk's position. There's no accountability. We should not pay Mr. Drennan, who is not the CPA he was represented to be, some $30 per hour to do work the acting clerk was appointed to do. It is clear from what I observed at the January board meeting, conversation about discrepancies between the treasurer's and the acting clerk's reports, that the acting clerk does not yet understand how her job works. The treasurer was blamed by members of the board because the totals didn't agree, until the difference was found on the back of the acting clerk's report. Mrs. Dy patently did not even know that her report contained the information which reconciled the two reports.
Would you please keep your three minutes and close it?
You bet. She appeared lost, however, she clearly does not see it as her responsibility to meet with the treasurer weekly to perform her job, as previous office holders have done. Since after all these months, the acting clerk has not learned how to do her job and chose no willingness to collaborate with the elected treasurer, I strongly suggest that Mrs. Dy resign, and the Board of Trustees' movement wants to find a fully qualified candidate who already understands township bookkeeping, as it is assigned by law to the township clerk's position. In addition, I ask that no more taxpayers' money be spent on an outside bookkeeper to do the job of the acting clerk and her deputy. The deputy is clearly, is clearly as unable to do the job as is Mrs. Dy, and perhaps she should resign as well. These are hard suggestions to make. I do not make them lightly. People are in conflict. Work needs to be done. Let's get on with it together.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name's Tom Phillips. I live at 2986 Wild Juniper Trail. And not only was this young lady closer to the podium, but she speaks far more eloquently than I will in those next two minutes. I echo many of the comments she made, and she and I have never met, and I had no idea what she was going to say when she got up here. But I think the thing I want to say more than anything is, in the last 10 years plus that I've lived in this township, and I have seen nothing in this township, and particularly at this board, but bickering, problems, backstabbing, lawsuits, non-trust among board members continue to permeate and generate through every board that has come into this room. I just have gotten to the point, and talked with my wife and family members, about perhaps it's just time to leave Acme Township, regardless of all the good things that are here for us, and the fact that I love our home and everything we've done to it over the last 10 years. I simply am embarrassed by the inability of our elected officials to do the right thing, to step up and bring these people together and make the right decisions. We elected each and every one of you to your positions to do a job. As the township supervisor, you have over-responsibility and opportunity to blend this group together and make them work. We need to do, as a township board, everything we can to make everybody in this room successful. And if there's a divisive element in the room, or in the township, that can easily be addressed and removed, then we do the right thing. And we move forward, and we make the elected officials, who we trust in you to do the right things, be effective and successful. I don't want to lose any of the board members, or any of the elected officials in this room. I want you to stay on your job to make Acme a good place to live, someplace where everybody will be proud of where they come from. But it's time to put those things together and develop a unified front, starting with the township supervisor, and permeating through this entire group, to do what needs to be done to make this board successful. Thank you.
Somebody else? Mr. Walden, please.
I had no intention of speaking when I came to this meeting. I wanted to be a good listener, but I really take offense at some of the statements that have been made. First of all, this is the greatest place in the world to live. I've been here for 30-some years, almost 40 years, I guess, and I've seen a lot of development in this township. I've met a lot of good people. There's been a lot of good people on the boards. A lot of us have been able to work together. I happen to have been a former board member and a former business owner. The criticism of Jay was not called for at all, as far as not having any management experience. I can tell you, from my experience of 30 years in management and having multiple employees, that Jay is qualified to do his job. And I think everybody on the board is qualified to do the job that they were elected to do. One of the things that we have to do is get some of the personal issues out of this and say, hey, we're here to work for the people of Acme Township. Make this a pleasant place to live. We've seen some good moves since this board was elected and put in from the previous board. You look at goodwill, you look at the development up there where Myers is going to go in, a couple other things that are happening in the township. This is all good for the people of Acme Township. This is not the sleepy little place it used to be. And if we don't do anything, we're going to be going backwards. And we want to keep moving forward. And I think it's incumbent upon all of you to throw the personal things aside and start working with one another, not saying, well, I can't be there today, or I can't be there tomorrow, we've got to do this over the phone, or we've got to do this with electronic means. Those days are gone. Let's get together and do it the way we have to, to accomplish a particular job. And I think we've got to be able to listen to the people in the township, what they would like to do, what they would like to see done, and move on from there. But I really feel bad for the lady who spoke up here first, because she's really sorely missing the whole feeling of Acme Township, which is very, very good at this stage of the game. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Jean Ockerman, 4155 Huntington Drive. I think this is the first time I've been here without prepared remarks. But I have to say, I am very excited about the potential of a new boat launch, and about Bayside Park improvements. And I have seen, even though I know we have a skeletal staff, and we have tight budgets, I've seen us make progress here. Now, I have a consulting business, and I go to DDA meetings and commission meetings, and I have to tell you, they're not always pretty. And that's the nature of the game. And it's all about constructive disagreement. And frankly, if everybody agreed all the time, I'd think something was wrong. So I think, I leave it to you people. You've been executives, you are leaders in your fields, you know how to constructively disagree. And I certainly feel, because I'm here for some other points on the agenda, I frankly am very excited. And nothing's going to take that excitement away from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to go over my report and I'll put on the text.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on the tax season, since it was closed on first. So we have 4,172 parcels, so our billings for the summer and winter was, we sent out 8,244 tax bills. We billed out 10.2 million. We collected 95% of that, which was 9.8 million. The Grand Teveras County will be purchasing an extra 5%, which is just short of 500,000. We currently have 30 taxing agencies, which we pay out on a bi-weekly basis. So that means the treasurer's office did in the last eight months, 1.2 million dollars per month of processing. I settled with Grand Teveras County Treasurer on March 10th, which was 10 days after closing, and we balanced to the penny. So I just, I wanted to especially thank Nancy Ederson and Erin Jennings for their work in that department. They did an exemplary job, and I very much appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. The promotion to approve our agenda today?
The motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Ford, any other questions on that? I feel wise. I'll just say, all in favor, say aye. Is there money here involved today?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Any conflicts of interest today? There ain't none? We have nothing on the consent calendar. It is listed, but nothing was presented, so there's nothing for the consent calendar today. Nothing to remove? No special presentations I'm aware of? No other reports? Correspondence? No other public hearing? There will be. There is, wasn't, put in the paper in the first item we go to. I'll get there. It was a public announcement, a public input for our grant process. New business, there is none. And our first item of old business, since we talked about this in a previous meeting, is our Acme Park Grant Application Approval. The board, there is a resolution in front of everyone. We're done with the presentation. Marcy's going to lead us through a very brief presentation of where we're at, and the work going on there. So Marcy?
Hello, everyone. So Beckett Rider has done a great job of pulling everything together with the help of Pat Flotfield and Jean Ockerman. We wrote a great letter of support to get other letters of support, and I think we've gotten about seven of them from now. Everything's being pulled together nicely, and they were able to trim the budget down so it fits the $400,000 price that we will have with our hopefully grant that we get, plus what we're donating from the township and the conservancy. Are there any direct questions that you have, and anything you would like to know?
I guess for everybody's benefit, what is the cycle? We submit this?
We submit it in April.
April, by April 1st, they make a decision.
In December.
When?
In December.
December.
Yep. It's usually, they say that usually the project agreements are normally distributed 12, 18 months after the application submission. So you would know in December, and then we might get it another year after that, about six months. So depending on what their cycle is for giving the grant, it takes 12 months, or 12 to 18 months.
Okay, so nothing's going to happen in '14, for sure, concerning this.
Correct.
And '15, is '15 even questionable?
I imagine they'll be available, start some things in '15.
Right. And once we sign the agreement, then we can start getting different bids and things. And I'm guessing that the money we have through the township and the money through the conservancy would be what we would start that with, and then the grant would catch up.
Once we know we have a.
Once we know we have the approval and the grant, and everything's signed, then we can start moving forward.
A question that comes up sometimes, what's going to cost the township on this? If you're up, I'll set you up.
That's fine. I want to ask that.
I think for transparency, everything has to be really spelled out so you really understand. Basically, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is we ask for three, the project's $400,000. We're asking for $300,000 for the DNR. That leaves a $100,000 bogey. The conservancy has said they'll pitch in $50,000 towards it. So that leaves $50,000 on account for that the township over a two-year period has to come up with. There's already 25 or 27.
27.
27,000 of that already identified. It was a, by a grant from the tribe at one time. So we still haven't touched taxpayer money, so the bogey is approximately $23,000 that we have to come up with, through perhaps other grants that we could go for in the interim time, or, I shouldn't say grant. Tribe money, if we should get some tribe money, or rotary money. So I would hope that your group in this interim period of time will look for other sources to even cover the 23K that we're.
And if it don't have, then the township's hooked for it.
Yes.
They're already hooked for $350,000 from the past board.
Well, yes.
Do they have plans to pay that back, or are we just going to walk further and keep going? It's kind of a touchy subject, you know? Kind of, don't go too far on your, yes, I will, until you know where the money's coming from. And just to say the taxpayer will pay it, maybe you ought to talk to them about it. There's a lot of people unhappy with other, you guys had nothing to do with. But, you know, $350,000, then more, more, more. Also, when you want a boat launch, you can't get $25,000. How does this automatically just everything for the park? I'm not sure I understand it.
No, we do have money for the boat launch for the side.
Totally? Huh? Totally? We have parks.
61,000 of the Sailor Park grant for the side, and then the teams, they will work to get donations of money for the rest of it. Yes. Just to clarify that. We have, that's identifiable in our monthly reports.
Those are extremely valid points, and I really encourage you, the time to see what this all unfolds is when the budget's put together. And those are pretty boring meetings, but that's when we're sitting there and saying we're going to put $25,000 here from the general fund, or whatever. I share your concerns. I, you know, the question of the $350,000 or $40,000 that I've spent in the past was all done in meetings, or resolutions were passed, and it was done. You can't go back.
No, you can't. But it's still the money of the taxpayers, gone. Maybe they ought to try and pay it back, or something, because took it out of your general fund, or wherever it came from. And then when you get yourself in a little scrape, you don't have your cushion. That, I assume why it was there.
Well, I would say is, the attendees going forward are going to be extremely transparent and let everybody know, not the last minute, that also we're going to transfer money around, but tell you now, here, over the next two-year period, what we have on the table, here's the monies we're looking at, here's where we're going to get them, so there isn't the surprise. That's all we can.
We'd like to know whatever amount it is that the taxpayer could be stuck with.
The max on this project is $23,000.
We, in our resolution, we have addressed, and for those who have, sorry, everybody that have, but we have to do a resolution on any grant. And we've identified in there the amount of money that the township has to come up with, and that is the money Gordy's talking about, the 23, plus the money that's aside, and the amount of money that the Grand Teveras Regional Land Conservancy has, she underically helped us with, $50,000. So it's identifiable in the resolution. So it's not anything hidden that's right with it. If we agree, or whatever we do with the resolution, it identifies it. It's not any hidden number.
Yes.
And I can't see you. Sorry.
Roy? You want to see Roy?
No, I'm just, so he doesn't think I'm not addressing. That is, you know, in the Parks and Rec survey, which was a pretty representative group of people, I mean, boat launch ranked high. I think it was the highest, wasn't it?
Roads was the highest.
And so, well, roads, yeah. Now we have a military road. And so, but the boat launch in the park did rank fairly high, and for what we can spend money on, those are the things that we can spend money on, because we don't have, we do have millages now for a road, because everybody voted that in. We have a millage for the library, which are other services, but hang on. And so for Parks and Rec, one of the things out of our general fund that we don't have a millage for, we do allocate some of taxpayer money, so that's why I don't want to be misleading you, that saying we're not going to give any money to our Parks and Rec for these improvements, that would not be true, okay? Because I believe at some point through the process, we are going to take tax dollars money to put into our Parks and Rec fund to help pay for some of this, whether it's through improvements, whether it's through, so that's why I don't want to mislead and say, and I can only speak for me, but in my thought process, we are going to budget money to potentially go to the Sailor Park if we run shortfall, because it was a big priority in that survey. And so, yeah, if we're short $10,000 or $17,000 when it comes down to doing that project, we're probably going to try to find that money to do it. So that's why I just didn't want it to be out there again, that we're not spending any money out of the general fund to do that. I guess I've not seen that, unless we've talked differently.
Yeah, but $17,000 is one thing, compared to the other amount.
I understand.
Some individual could give you $17,000 for something they want, but I don't think there's too many going to haul up $350,000, I'd like.
Correct.
So you've got to look all the way around, not just at your complete agenda, look what the taxpayer voted for.
Right.
And you know, this conversation goes back to 1989 on this boat ranch, and we're still talking about it.
And all we hear about is.
And thank God for Jean and her hard work.
Absolutely.
But this is craziness, and this is where the frustration from the community comes, and I just.
Somebody decide these questions. One thing I was going to clarify, when you said the millage, the millage doesn't do anything for the residents in their residential neighborhoods, unfortunately today.
It's the arterial roads. It's the main roads.
So people, I knew you knew that, yes. And that's an issue we are talking about later, not today, and other things.
Is this the public hearing?
No, we don't have a public hearing. It's a public comment. We will come back to public comments in a minute.
Okay.
Keep it up here first, and let Marcy get her presentation done, and then we'll come back to that. Then we'll have all the facts from Marcy. Thanks.
This is your legend.
Yes.
One thing, now, let me get this clear. This is for Bayside Park. This is not for Sailor Park.
That's right. That's right.
So we're talking a kayak launch. We're not talking a boat launch.
kayak, canoe, restroom.
We did that one at the last one. I mean, we're talking about this here, and when anybody's going out about this, it threw me off, right?
No, I was just going to address this question.
Okay. What I'm going to say is, when this Bayside Park was proposed to everybody, there's not any township funds that were going to go for this. I think that's kind of what Gordy was getting at, too.
It was not, there was very weak transparency in that. And I went to most of the meetings, and it wasn't clear, there was never a clear, right or wrong, it wasn't clearly spelled out to the public, and people kind of heard what they wanted to hear along in that whole process, about township money wouldn't be spent, it was going to come from grants and other things.
I flat-out asked the supervisor at that time, Gordy.
Pardon me?
I flat-out asked the supervisor, and he said, no.
I know. I'm just trying to be calm here.
I'm not going to beat around the bush.
But that's done, and if anything.
Water on the bridge.
I think there's some members on this board now, and I think Paul is probably, is conservative on the same, they'll make sure things aren't snuck under, and you'll know. If we're going to do something, and it's going to take money from the general fund, which all of our costs come out of the general fund, in essence, based on revenues, it will be discussed. And I guess the biggest thing is, and may we get off topic, we have a revenue every year, and we have expenses. And it's one thing to say, revenues that exceed expenses, to take, in the current year, to take those monies and direct them to a road, Special Assessment District, or something else, that's one thing. To go to the reserve, the general fund, I think is a bigger deal. And I think that should really be brought out in a meeting. Hey, we're going to go against, this wasn't in the budget, we're going to go against a general fund and lower the level of the general fund to support something. That's what happened. The $350,000 you talked about, by and large, came out of the general fund, drained the general fund, brought down to work. Which is, at times, if the community says, yep, pay some money on the general fund, because you want to put some money towards a, one of my favorite topics is, Special Assessment Districts to approve roads, or parks, or something else, I think we have a meeting, and it gets discussed, and you know what the, not only the squeaky wheels want, but what everybody in the township wants. So all I can do is, going forward, I think there's going to be much more open, if we spend something, you don't want to know a week before we have a gun to our head, you want to know what's the thing over the next two years, is $23,000? If that changes, it'll be discussed, and I think Marcy does a great job, and, I mean, we didn't have a Parks and Rec committee until recently, so we've got a form and a format.
Yes, we did. We did, too.
We've had one for years. Well, let me put the word functioning.
Let's go back to Marcy's presentation, because you're respectful of her and her time, to tell us about this, and we'll open so people can, because that's part of the public need, to talk about this, so. Marcy, I want to hear back to you for a minute.
Are there any other questions coming directly from the board? I can explain to you the process of how we decided to work on the Bunker Hill kayak launch, due to the DNR trust fund grants being based on a point system of 400 points with extra bonus points, I guess, depending on the focuses they want that year. Like this year, it's water trails and accessibility for universal access for all people. So we really looked at what within our park system would fit, and what would even qualify within the point system. Unfortunately, nothing on Bayside Park, we thought, would fit within those and get us the extra points to raise it up to the 500 platform. If we don't make a point cutoff, we're automatically gone. So we really tried to look at what earns points, and how do we get the most points out of a project, and that's how we came up with the boat launch, due to the accessibility for the kayak and canoe, and the water quality protections for the shoreline, and the fact that it is part of a strategic plan to develop the Lake Michigan shoreline that brings an economic residual back to the community.
I'd like to add what you said a couple of minutes. Marcy's gone out. Marcy's gone out, all kinds of people get letters of support, disability network, watershed, individual businesses. All kinds of people throughout the community, those will be attached to this. Those are key to the state when they grant money to see, is the money being used for all kinds of things. So that, that's, there's been a big collaborative effort between the Parks and Recs and others to, Land Conservancy, Megan's here, to help us craft this in a manner that gives us the best chance we have. No guarantee, because it goes with all the other grants that go in for the DNR, but I've got, I did send out to the board members, I know most of you had had time to read it, because we just, we got the draft copy of the grant going. There's still some final words and things to be added to it, like our resolution if we approve it, like the minutes of the meeting if we approve it. We took final pictures this morning in the snow, because they needed something different. Copies of the deeds for the properties as this is on, we had to provide, and we actually had to go find one this morning, we didn't have from 1988, for the original one, Hill Site, we found it. Thank goodness to Peggy Haynes of the, what do they call that?
Registered deeds.
Registered deeds, oh, thank you. Registered deeds office, so they faxed it right to us. So there's been a lot of collaboration to do this, a lot of work. So I'd like to, if you got anything else major, otherwise let's open it to hear what.
No, I think everything's been covered the last meeting, and this is just details.
Good. Yeah, I wanna make sure, and if anybody has any comment, good, bad, indifferent, that's fine. That's what public comment is about, and that's why we put the ahead.
Just a real quick thing, I did go to the Parks and Rec meeting when they kinda discussed putting this all together. They did do a nice job of trying to figure out where to cut, because when you looked at the overall, and Megan was gracious enough to be there also to help say, okay, that's worthy of points, that's not worthy of points, so you didn't eliminate point potential there. And so, in that process, at least, when you see some things that maybe were taken out, it's because of costs, and it was because of not being as quiet, or not as high points, and then it was something they could come back in and do easily. So if you didn't get the money now, we could come back later potentially, if the money came around for a different grant or something of that nature, to easily come back in and supplement and make it balance. Balance, yeah, exactly. So that was some of the thought process that they went through.
You know, two weeks ago, we hadn't even started on this, so I think it's fantastic. I got this thing in the mail today, I looked through it, and there's some ticks and ties you gotta put in here, but I think it's excellent.
Galen's done a very good job pulling this together.
Well, one thing just for.
He's not just Galen.
Maple Bay, the county, as you may or may not know, Megan probably knows, since they were putting them for their grant, they submitted their grant. They submitted to the board, the council, they turned it down, so. So from that standpoint, I would think that would. All I wanted to say was hopefully that, I'd like to see that improvement going, but that would've been competition for this grant.
So, let's open to anybody in public that on this wants to comment, so we can get it recorded. We've had some comments, good or bad.
This is just wonderful. Rochelle, Abby, and I've attended many, many meetings from way back when, and maybe the same meetings this gentleman back here has attended. Gordy, not Gordy, Jay, I would hope that you would maybe explain to him that of all that, that huge amount.
Roy, his name's Roy.
Roy.
Yeah, he's almost your neighbor.
Of that huge amount that was spent, that 350,000, anywhere, that most of that had to be doled out early. So it was, it was really an advancement until the amount could be put back into our coffers. I don't know how much really we spent on that shoreline, but I think it was like 75,000. So you're, you are really needing to catch up with the times.
I'm not buying 70,000 total.
No.
No, no, that's not, that's not working with figures, so you're still lying.
And that, that a lot of that was paid back to the township once the grants started coming in and they were able to catch up.
It'd be nice then, Jay, if we got a total of what to say today.
Right, right.
There is a document out that actually Jean authored, it is on our website, and I believe the amount of money that we did not get reimbursed for in the end, it came out of coffers. Not reimbursed, but not reimbursed, is around 370,000. There was a lot of money above that we did get reimbursed for, and that's a very valid statement, but there was about 370, but was never reimbursed to the township.
But our shoreline is worth 8 million.
But we have a tremendous asset on the other side of that, yes, that you don't let sit there and not do something with, because it's, we have it. I mean, you know, if you're, if you inherit a farm, do you let it go foul, or do you use it and make it what you want it to be? Everybody makes different decisions about that, obviously, but we had to take what we've got and do the best with it, and do it in stages and time and effort. And that's why I think we're here today, so this was one way to start that journey appropriately. But your comments are appreciated. Yeah, I would assume that comment is you're really for this.
I'm sorry?
Your comment is you're really for this.
Yes, I am. I am. In fact, we worked down hard, everybody that worked.
We appreciate that.
That's a ideal 4888 five-mile road. I've been working on the Bayside Park project since 1979. And I would be terribly disappointed if we did not, if this board did not further this process. And I guess I concur with Amy that, you know, the purpose of the board is to do the people's will. And I have sat in on more visioning sessions and surveys, and you can go down every single one of them, and it's shoreline acquisition, it's protect the bay. This board and the previous board are doing exactly what the people want. And I also agree that the boat, that the boat launch has been on the docket since, in the mid-'80s or before. So that is critically important as the shoreline, no question about it. But I'm here to say that this is an 8 million dollar project, and I can't even tell you, maybe, maybe you can, how much township individual members have given in sweat, blood, and tears to this project. And it's what the township and the residents want, and every survey has shown that. So you're doing the right thing, and of course, we have to be careful with the money, but that's what the money is there for. That is the people's desire and wish, and it's going to be beautiful when it's done. And I thank you for taking it as far as you have and continuing on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Welcome back, by the way. You haven't seen me.
Charlie Abern, 4312 West Ridge Drive. I have such positive things to say about the hard work Marcy has put into this. She has done a superb job. It's incredible with the land conservancy and the donations that this community made. Not just this community, but a lot of donations to this park were made by people outside of this community. This park is a big, big, big positive part to Abby. And its ultimate economic benefit is gonna be so enormous that it's hard to meet to see how people can be critical of it. And we do need facilities for people to use the park, and that's important, and there seems to be some comments about Wyatt kayak and canoe. A lot of people are kayaking and canoeing. As a personal heavy user of that area at the end of Bunker Hill, that needs to be made better, because a lot, a lot of people use that. I don't know that people realize how many people go down there and use that park. And now, with all that land being part of it, it is something that needs to be looked at seriously, and I'm so pleased to see that something is in the works.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I apologize for my alarm.
Park the next time. That happens. Anything else, Marcy? Otherwise, we do have a motion, a resolution in front of us.
What number would it be?
11, it's already marked.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2014-11, application to the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund for the Bayside South Park improvements.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on this, anyway? I appreciate all your comments. We need to consider every one of them, the things that are just for it, and the things that say, be cautious of how you're for it. They're all valuable as we go forward to look at. Because this does affect how we spend money in the end, I think a roll call vote would be appropriate, Nancy.
Gentlemen?
Yes.
The points?
Yep.
Scott?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Salinger?
Yes.
Klett?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you all of you. And Marcy, you and your co-chair, Steve, and others too, because, and all the citizens and people. Megan, anything you wanna say?
Just thank you very much, and congratulations on your development grant application. Keep my fingers crossed for you guys.
Megan. Megan got it this morning early, and had comments earlier than I could almost read, and we were getting, we were back and forth doing documents. So it is, as Gordy said, in two weeks from the last meeting, we have done a lot of work and a lot of people together. So it includes when you're, and we still got other things done, by the way. I learned how to get into the grant process and start it, and balance and stuff, so we all, we all learn when we do new processes like you said. So thank you. The next item we have is approval of bids received for township technologies. When we last had our meeting, we talked about upgrades to our computers and servers to protect the township's data. We did send RFPs out to four people, five people. And Connie and I looked through them, I'm gonna let Connie go through a little bit of this, but two of them did not wish to apply, you know, did not return the grant, so RFP, so we really have three to present, right?
Right.
So if you wanna give them a little quick overview of it? Of what? No, we do not have.
Just with, okay, you have a summary?
We're gonna, I can make a real quick copy of this, but she's got a number to it.
Yeah, the grid that I sent out to you guys last, it's changed a little bit. The ORR did not respond to the RFP, so they're off. We had, like Jay said, we had three. We had Wyatt Computers, North Harbor Solutions, and IT Wright. When Jay and I went through them, the packets, the numbers changed a little bit from the grid, but the ranking was still the same. IT Wright came in the lowest at about 17,700. What they're putting together is server, A workstations, Microsoft Office, and what's called a proactive maintenance solution system, which is $3,000 a year for unlimited remote and onsite access support. Then we have North Harbor Solutions, they came in the highest at 21,400. They're doing the similar server, similar workstations, Microsoft Office, the same email. They did not give us a price on that, so they're actually, it would be a little bit more for them. Their ongoing maintenance, it's 3,900 a month, a year, and it sounded like it was gonna be a per hour based in blocks, blocks of time.
Well, actually, we went back on the email, it's important, and asked me, did they, was it included or wasn't it, and we never got a response.
Right, yeah. I talked to them yesterday, and I asked for a price on email, and he said he sent it, and I have not yet.
He didn't send it to us.
Yeah, he didn't send it in, so. Then the third option is Wyatt Computers. They're, they came in at 20,400. They have similar server, workstations, laptop, Microsoft Office. Their remote access for all of them, maintenance, their gold package, which would be similar to what IT Wright has for unlimited support and maintenance, what they do is they're, you know, they're there, they monitor all the workstations on a daily basis. Looks like that's, I think it's 715 a month. Jackie's here from Wyatt, so that. That's 715 a month, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's about 8,500 a year. So they're coming in at 20,400 with the 18,000 hardware software, and then the, I think it's 1,900 for their email package, so. They, they gave us an option of renting the computers at 359 dollars a month. So we're, we're looking at with them, a possibility of 350 a month for the computers and 715 for support, so the $1,000 a month on an ongoing basis. So one of the questions we did have, Jackie, was the renting is for five years. What happens like in the third year if we had, wanted to replace some equipment, if there's some upgrades?
The hardware as a service should be three years.
It was 60 months.
Is it 60 months?
Yeah.
Well, if something came up and it needed to be replaced, we would just replace it.
Okay. So if there are new systems coming out, we could.
We would upgrade, yeah. We would just pull them out and replace it. And then, so with the monitoring, so if you go with the monitoring package with that, that includes all of your antivirus and your spamware and all those upgrades too. That just keeps roping in as well.
Yeah.
That's one of the things, we don't do, we don't have computers that are not monitored proactively by anybody. We have to call and then look down to the, you know, disc clean, all just basic stuff. So there's a lot of things that keeps us more operating. The other thing of the three, I thought, the kind I thought was really critical, one was North Harbor Solution has one maintenance person, and the backups, not as easy. Wyatt had four people available locally that they can put on it, plus their remote people. Our present provider only is a one-person shop, very nice people, they've done us a good job through the years, but there's one person. They did not bid, by the way. And IT Wright had two things. One is they have one person in all of northern Michigan to cover us and the UP. So if they're in someplace else in bad weather, they're, where they're at, obviously, if any of us, we can't move between that. The other was their contract had some concerns in the language that both our attorney had seen originally, both Connie and I saw, and thought that was not appropriate. It's not worth going through what that is, but it was, it just didn't meet our needs, we felt. Is that, am I stating that well?
Yeah, there's the questionable whether, who gets, who determines what support means. And it was more based on what they determine it means rather than what we would determine.
We think it ought to be what we as the client paying the bill ought to determine. So we would, our recommendation would be Wyatt. The, one other question we have the board, do we wanna look at the leasing of equipment? It does save us money upfront. But I imagine over time, if you lease, as you normally look at any lease, there's.
It should be fairly easy to figure a comparison if you were to buy from, say, the top, the number one, you know, you had some concerns.
Correct.
And then figure their annual, how many years out it would be that it'd catch up. You know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely.
So if we could do that and have an idea that in five years, Wyatt's gonna be the same cost as it would be with the other company.
Well, the other didn't offer leases.
Right. No, no, not leasing, purchase. You got your purchase and your that compared to your rental.
No, no, no. The rental was Wyatt owned.
Right.
Lease.
Lease, excuse me.
Yes, lease.
Rental, lease. But your lease is gonna cost less initially, but how many years is it gonna take before you'd be the same cost? You follow what I'm saying?
We know, yeah.
So did you do that?
We had that discussion.
And so what was it?
Well, actually, because some of the, some of the costs are gonna be recurring. You've got the hardware and software that's at one time, but then you've got the support that's recurring every year.
Right.
So.
So in, in five years' time, is it gonna be the same money through the one company as it would be through Wyatt, is what I'm getting.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Because if that's the case, then it would totally make sense, every five years or so, you kinda gotta do something anyways.
Right. Will you say?
Well, no, but I mean.
Well, no, I'm, that was, let's clarify that with the other.
I'll have to, let me just check with our CEO just to clarify that, but I mean, hardware, any type of electronics, I mean, they depreciate just like vehicles these days. Nobody goes and buys a cell phone and signs a five-year contract or, you know, anything like that, because you know you're gonna need more. Microsoft, the new Microsoft that we quoted. Microsoft, the new Microsoft that we quoted, you know, Windows eight is going to be in operation or eight point one will be in operation until 2018. Windows seven, they're going to continue, Microsoft will continue to do updates on that and work with that until July of 2015. So the trend is going to go up to Windows eight point one, excuse me, to 2018. And then around that time, once again, Microsoft, all the software, they're going to force us to upgrade.
I know, I see. Not the way the market's reacting, but that's.
Right, no, I mean, but, but, right, but as a Microsoft partner, that's what they're telling us anyhow. So I'm just relaying what, eventually you are correct though. I'm sure at some point technology's going to cap out.
It has.
So, I mean, that's, you can either buy it outright and own it or lease.
They were doing a little number crunching real quick. They may interrupt your thought.
What was IT Wright's support after the first year?
Three thousand.
Three, three thousand a year.
A year, so three thousand a year.
It looks.
While you're doing that, can I ask, is there a buyout? Is it an option of, if it, I'm assuming it's probably a three-year lease. I might be amazed if you did a five-year. If it's a three-years, a buyout option at the end of the three years that they, you decide to keep it?
I'm sure. Because all we would be doing is sending it back if you wanted to, like lease to own. I'm checking right now.
Well, the other, the other thing was, I think it's really important to, we've all experienced this here. When you, when it's not working, if it's tax time, election time, or it's just somebody needs a document that walks through the door, and you call somebody and they say, I'll get to it in three hours. It's not easy. And that's a real concern for me as the person sitting here every day when you've got all this stuff going and all, when somebody says, I can't operate. And you come through the door and need a piece of document.
It sounds, let me ask a question. Came up a little in the last meeting. Sounds like we have some, still some questions on lease versus Wyatt and the term. Are we under a gun? And I asked this last time, are we under a gun that we've got to do something?
I, I believe we are under a gun to do something within, not maybe before the next meeting, which is April 8th, but we need to get something done pretty quick.
Our Microsoft.
XP is out of.
Yeah, they're unsupported in April.
April 5th?
Eighteenth, April fifteenth, and it's, your system's still going to work.
Yeah, but it's still.
Hundreds of millions of people are still going to be XP incorporated.
My, my only point is, you know, if we, if we truly, if something's going to happen, we've got to make decisions, yeah, it's fine. But just listen to that. I think, I think you should, and you brought it up before, a lease is a good option if you, if you do a cost analysis, a three-year, you have a good buyout as an option.
Five years and you can keep it.
It was a five, the code?
Yes, sir.
So it is five years.
Who's the chance they'll yet extend XP again? Because people are not happy about, they're not happy about Windows eight. Nobody's adopting it.
Well, they're going to.
They're going to eight one now.
Eight one is.
I don't think that they're going to, the, the servers can no longer, the servers are going out. I mean, Windows XP was designed over 10 years ago.
And our server's about out of storage gas today. I had to unload it twice to keep enough power running for storage.
So when Windows XP was originally designed, it wasn't designed for, for the communication and the file sharing and everything. Now that is happening these days, it was designed for the individual consumer with their one piece of hardware.
But the board would like us to go just look at lease versus buy. I think that's, for me, that's a question of, for.
Well, I think they have a good estimate on what my question was.
Yeah, we do. Two different ways of looking at it. Amy put it out five years and figured out the, the amount. I've got the, when it.
Catches up.
When it catches up, yeah.
Okay, what is?
Wyatt, it looks like two years. It'd be a thousand sixty-four a month in two years. IT would be nine oh two in two years each. And then for North Harbor, it's eleven thirty-nine. So it looks like at about, in the third year, they'll be catching up with what IT.
What savings we would have had.
The savings.
So it's going to take three years to recognize any savings, but their support, what you're seeing and what you're telling us, is better initially and throughout then.
Yes.
And what is the cost savings, if you will, at, in those?
In the five, because that might be the better way to look at it. If you want to look at a cost savings, is in five years, if you take the eighty-five fifty-eight, multiply that by five, because that's a year, okay? That's forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. So in five years, we're going to spend forty-two nine on the leasing and the computer equipment, okay? IT Wright was seventeen seven for the initial hardware plus three thousand a year afterwards. So I took three, multiplied by four, which is twelve, which is seven nineteen. So I came up with twenty-nine thousand seven hundred, okay? It's a difference of thirteen thousand two hundred dollars for five years.
Five years, ten years, eight, thirteen.
Five years. So thirteen two, you would save with IT Wright. We would own the equipment upfront, whereas Wyatt, you're owning the equipment at the end of five years, correct?
Well, you can buy it upfront if you want to buy it.
No, I understand. But you're leasing it, it's kind of a lease to own. So in five years, you're leasing to own, whether you pay it now or you're paying it monthly.
So you're paying more for what you're saving.
No, no, because it's still cer, well, in theory, but.
Dollars, what's the dollars?
Yeah, thirteen two, yes. So thirteen two, if service is the same, because that sounds to be the question of location. So I have not, I don't know anything about Wyatt. I have only met with, you know, once, so that's. So if you've done that and the question of service is an issue, then what's the value of the service? You know, and the location, because from my understanding, IT Wright is going to have one person here. From my understanding, they guarantee four hours. If you have a crash, it will be on your site within four hours of crash.
When they want to, is what the contract actually says.
But did you ask them about that?
It says right in their document.
I know, but did you ask for clarification?
We did not.
Because sometimes when there's questions in a contract like that, you need to clarify that.
How many people do they have?
Which one?
One person in northern Michigan.
No, but in, like, in Bath Township, they have a lot. I mean, I think their whole staff is thirty. But I'm just saying, it's still a service issue. So, I mean, if they're more comfortable here, I'm not in this office. I'm not going to speak about that.
Let's talk about the lease versus buying.
Right. Thirteen two is, in five years.
So to go which way, I'm trying to, I'm not sure I'm going to explain this to you. The dollars I do.
At the leasing.
If I lease it, I'm saving or spending more?
You're spending more.
Okay, then, then it's more costly.
Yes.
The lease is what you're telling us. That's the bottom line.
In the five-year time.
Right, yes.
Now, what I want to say is the bait, what I'm finding, the basic difference between IT Wright and Wyatt is that IT Wright is, they have a package that they do to government agencies. They do the same one over and over and over and over. I mean, they've got that down, they've honed it down. They know that, you know, the servers are the same, the workstations are the same, the software's the same, support's the same. That's why they can lower their cost, the three thousand dollar support. What I'm liking with hearing from Wyatt is that, you know, they're doing the same server, the software and all that, but in every discussion we've had with them, they go beyond just, this is what we do, this is what we can do, and this is how we do it. It's more proactive questions, like, how, how do you want to do this, or we can do this? So to me, they're a little bit more, a wider variety of services rather than just this, this box that they've created that they can install and they know that works.
And we also ask in the bid to people, please come in and look at our equipment and do what you can look. Harbor came in and looked, didn't run any tests, looked. Wyatt came in and actually downloaded and looked at information and tested, understanding exactly what we have configured wise, software-wise. And IT Wright just responded, no, no calling.
Well, I talked to them. I had a two-hour.
But they never came in.
They never came in.
They never came in.
But that's because they can guarantee what they've got. It's more of a.
They're, but they don't, but they don't know all what we have in that.
Well, except that we're going to basically have everything.
You guys have a heads up here, so you got, you got to give me a second here to comprehend this. So Wyatt, if we buy it, it's twenty-four, twenty thousand four hundred to buy everything today. What is then the annual maintenance if we buy it? Because the lease was a seven fifteen. So now for the next four years, if we want the gold package, how much is that outside the lease?
Seven hundred and fifteen a month.
Okay, no, that can't be the same, because that would include the equipment, right?
No, three hundred and fifty-nine is.
That's your service. And that's three years for a service contract.
So we would pay, so, so this includes a three-year service contract? The twenty thousand four hundred includes?
No, that's your hardware. That's, that's your equipment and your software.
I'm thirty-six.
The first year is twenty thousand four hundred. The equipment cost is eighteen thousand five, and then the seven fifteen a month is an ongoing cost. It never goes away.
So then you'd be nuts to buy it because.
Well, right, yes.
If you want the service.
Sure.
So you'd be nuts to, or to not go with this company, okay?
That's why, that's why I thought.
So it's like, or you don't go with this company, you go with a different company.
Yes.
Yeah, you'd be nuts not to, because you're paying twenty thousand four hundred, you want the gold package. Well, you can't even get it, they don't offer it.
Well, no, we do.
But you have to lease to buy.
No, you can do it either way. The leasing is just.
But then it's still seven fifteen, it's the same cost.
Yeah.
Same, there's no benefit. Do you get what I'm saying?
Well, if we did twenty thousand for the, or eighteen thousand for the equipment, then we'd also pay seven fifteen a month for service.
But we're going to pay seven fifteen to lease it anyway.
Well, no.
Is what you're just telling me.
No, three fifty-nine is the leasing cost. Three fifty-nine a month is the leasing cost for the equipment and that's it.
Not the, not the service.
Not the service.
So then I take seven, three fifty-nine from seven fifteen? You guys keep telling me seven fifteen after the first year, so I have to take three fifty-nine from seven fifteen?
No.
Add it to it.
Yeah, add it to. That's what, see, that's a. The three fifty-nine is, would be our monthly.
Gordy had asked a question.
For the equipment that we pay on a lease. And then the seven fifteen is what we pay on a monthly for the gold package support.
So a total each month, if we go with the lease to own, is going to be not seven fifteen, it's a thousand sixty-four.
Yeah, that's what I said, it takes, it's about the third year is what.
Gordy wants to make a motion, I think.
I'd like to make a motion. I know there's pressure to move forward on this, but this is an investment. The hardware doesn't concern me, but the company does. And us fully understanding the agreement we get into, what is service? What do they really mean by it? I think you've done a lot of good work in gathering this stuff and narrowing it down to three vendors. I think, I'd like to just ask that, rapid, a little more work gets done. Some of this gets put into a format that we can take a look at, separating hardware costs, soft, and then software costs and what the maintenance is. I, I could make a recommendation going one way or another. Anyway, that's a lot of emotion and I shouldn't, but. Motion is to.
Table.
Table it and come back with something where you break it down and try to get a true apples-to-apples comparison on hardware, software, and service. And also do some, a couple of reference checks. The big question is service and just, I'm sure they've all provided you some references to make sure you can.
We manage, we manage the network. We run the whole network for Benzie County, and I have a list of references that I've sent over.
If, if we're not at the crunch that I believed we were, I'm okay with that. But I thought that we were kind of in a position where we were like shoestring and bubble gum taping what we got together to keep it going.
Yeah, and I'm running the ten million dollar tax software on a laptop, and it takes my deputy fifteen minutes to process a deposit because the machines are so slow that we don't, we're just limping along. Now, right now, I'm done with taxes, so I have a little bit of time, but we've also had crashes.
We actually have any server crashes.
Well, I thought we were down twice for a whole day.
No.
What happened, why was I?
We were, nobody's ever said we were down for a whole day. We've had, been in simplex mode on our backup and not, the server was not down, not operating.
Well, we were dead in the water, working, we couldn't use our computers, what?
Well, we weren't. Not that I'm aware of. We, we were in a simplex mode on our backup, which was the concern. And we had to replace the backup power, but that, we were only down in the evening when we replaced it. We never were through down.
Well, then I was misinformed.
Okay.
If we're in a, I mean, we, I feel like we made you two in charge of this. If you feel the information you've supplied us with covers the references, covers the best option for us financially in what our service is here. Meaning we have eight computers, laptop. Who's going to give us the best service? Because, you know, we do have a lot of critical information on that network. I mean, I don't want to micromanage it either. So, I mean, that's where, if you've done that research and you guys are comfortable here and you want to make a recommendation, I guess I'm okay with moving forward with that recommendation. But.
We do have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion.
Not been supported, I agree, I just want to make sure.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, the comments are ours. We have a motion, I have not heard support. Motion advised for lack of support. Do I have another motion?
I make a motion, we recommend Wyatt Computers for our system.
Which level, sorry?
I would go with the gold.
But I mean the what?
The leasing of the gold package, the.
I thought we just said the leasing. Your motion's all right, but.
It takes, no, that's fine. It's, it's going to take, in the third year, it starts to become more expensive than the other three.
So that, well. Make your motion, you make your motions if you want, and then we'll come back, okay? Do I have a second to what Connie's?
Any question on that? What's the term of that lease? Is it a three-year lease or is it a five-year?
It is sixty months, but what, what, okay, it is five years, but we can replace it.
What's the early buyout? Like, if three years from now, you want to do all this on your phones?
Yeah, right, right.
What's the buyout?
On your phones?
Well, something, technology changes. There's, you know, there's definitely going to be a technology change in five years. So, but I think that's what we were asking Jackie is, would we be able to swap out and get something new? And she said yes.
You want to get too much out of the motion there, I think.
I make a motion that we accept the proposal of the RFP from Wyatt Computers. Is that? Oh, with, with, with the gold package and renting the computers. I'll say that.
Five-year lease. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Five-year lease. Yes, that's what it is. First is purchase. We have a second. Any other question on that? My, I have a question. I think that I would, I understand the cash flow. I believe over, over time, as the citizens spend money, they're better off buying at the price I say. Because, yes, we break even at certain point for the other way. But, but I believe this equipment will have more than five years, some of it. Maybe not ten, but more than five.
But I'm just concerned that we're, like we're now, we're stuck with computers that should have been replaced. And if we rent them.
At the end of the five, do we own the equipment?
Yes, sir.
At the end of five, we own the equipment.
But you're paying for the service. See, that's.
No, not if you're paying for the service.
Not if you're doing the year, the, from what I understood. We're getting the gold package when we rent. Is that correct?
No, gold package is, and it doesn't matter if you buy it or.
Buy or rent is not.
Okay, so that's totally separate.
We will be paying seven.
No, no.
The, the, yeah, the, we rent it at three fifty-nine or we buy it at eighteen thousand?
To me, the real question is your lease or your buy. And everybody has to use all that. Mine is to buy it now, because I think we have some money put aside and other, and I think it's a lot.
Could we prepay the lease? Could we prepay the lease? If we had, if we paid two years ahead of time, if we have money set aside, could we do that?
I would have to check on that, on the financing and on how that would work. I would have to check on that, on the financing, on how that would work.
Is that something that saves you some money? The only reason I would suggest, I would lean towards renting is because...
It actually takes, it takes 50 months for 18,000. So, we're gonna be 10 months longer paying $359. So, we're gonna pay $359, $3,000 more to lease it than to buy it. And by leasing it, it's their equipment. If in that five years something happens, they replace it. $359 a month, $3,000 is worth that, I think, in five-year time.
So, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second.
Let me just ask you a question. The difference on a purchase and a lease, if, if we purchase it and there's a crash and something has to be replaced, if we have a maintenance agreement, do you fix it? Is that included within the make, parts and labor within the maintenance agreement?
There's a three-year warranty.
Compared to five?
No, there's a warranty, just, aside from the service agreement. There's a three-year, so, I mean, just so we're not overweight weighing the valuable lease. If you buy it, there's a three-year warranty.
Three-year warranty to buy it, five-year warranty to lease it. We pay 3,000 more and we get two more years replacement.
My question is, when you get to years four and five, on the maintenance agreement, if a hard drive crashes, is that replaced on the, under the maintenance agreement?
Under the lease, yes.
Under the maintenance agreement if you purchase it?
You're not, you're, yes, that would be part of the lease. That's not part of the ma, the managed service of it.
No, if you purchase it, if you purchase it...
Oh, yeah, no, no. If, if you own it all upright and year four, something crashes, you're not under warranty anymore and that's your product and you own it.
Okay, so my question was...
Will I service it?
No, my question was, if you have a maintenance agreement, I thought, and I'm not even sure what your maintenance agreement entails. Does your maintenance agreement, um, cover hardware beyond the warranty period?
No, if, if we had to repair hardware beyond the warranty period, that would not be covered under the managed service agreement. There is not a maintenance agreement.
So, there is no maintenance agreement?
Correct. But we can work on things.
Okay. If, if there's, something crashes during this three-year warranty period, is that time and labor, excuse me, material and labor to fix it?
Define crash.
Hard drive crashes, just has to be replaced.
Then we have to overnight one from HP and, no, you do not pay for that. We would take care of that.
Hard, you pay for the hardware and the service to come in and replace it. Labor and material.
If you're on a managed service contract with us, which you would be, no, you would not pay for that. That would be covered.
If you own it, the equipment would not be, but the service would be covered.
The equipment will be covered for three years, but beyond three, yes.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we've got some discussions, any additional?
I think Doug didn't understand what I came up with. If you divide 18,000 by $359 a month, which is your monthly rental fee, if you will, it takes 50 months, five, zero, point, one, whatever, to come up with 18,000. So, it takes 50 months to where you're paying more. So, you have 10 months left. So, $359 times 10 more months is $3,590 more you're gonna pay over five years to guarantee that if we have a hardware crash, that's not just a service thing, it's a crash that is fully replaceable because it's under the, for that...
For that five years.
What the difference is, what Doug was asking me on the math stuff that we were doing is, I said the hardware was not, I did $715, I didn't include the hardware in there 'cause it was a little different. So, then if you wanna compare the service to service, IT Right is $3,000 for a year. This company is $8,580 for that same package. So, we're gonna pay $5,580 more for the same package for that service. So, that's where the 13, two, yeah.
Okay. Because we're talking about spending money, I think I'll call for the vote, please.
The point?
Can I make a vote with just a comment attached to it? I'll vote yes, knowing that the two people here are the ones that use it. And if you're totally comfortable and you're, this is, you've done enough research, you're totally comfortable in your mind, and this is, you wanna go, shoot the lock off. So, I guess that's a yes.
Well, it depends on our vote.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Solinger.
Yes.
Colette.
Yes.
Genema.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, we will proceed forward. Thank you for all your answering questions.
Glad you were here, Jackie.
You're welcome.
These are tough things to look to because, and I, Connie was mentioning, we were talking, really from the, from a perspective of technology. We've lived with this system and I don't know, it was here before eight years ago, a long, long time. And this does give us some other opportunities that we wouldn't have. Won't force us to take, maybe otherwise we probably oughta take, so it's...
Was the Washington lease just a...
Yes. Thank you. That passed.
Can I just make something on the end of this? That somebody makes a contact with the companies we did not go with. So, they at least know. 'Cause we've had people come to us now that said they're not getting told. So, let's make sure IT Right, whoever else, North Harbor, and whoever else. Just so they know we went with it. I appreciate your...
Okay. Thank you. Good discussion, I thought it would be easier, but that's really good to go through that and understand those dangers. The last item of discussion is on our agenda, is discussion on the internal audit accounting position. Our accounting position. We've had this before, we've talked about many things with it. I don't know where to start on it, in all honesty. There's two different opinions about this. Paul, do you wanna start? I'll let you.
Actually, I, I think I was under the understanding this was gonna be done at our last meeting, or maybe even the meeting before. I don't remember how long it's been now that we've been dealing with this. As a board, we need to have certain things work together. Obviously, we need Connie's office and Kathy's office to work together, to, to give us the numbers, if you will. If we've hired someone to help make that happen, and regardless of the reasons, that person isn't helping to make that happen, then we need to find someone else to help make that happen. If they can agree on someone, that's awesome. They should hopefully be able to do that. But obviously, right now, we're at a point where it seems that Dennis, for whatever reason, isn't doing what we thought he was gonna do. So, I think he needs to be replaced, period. He may have done a great job, in Kathy's view. Sorry, Kathy, it didn't work with Connie. And that's what we need, is someone to work between Kathy and Connie, period. So, my motion would be to, unfortunately, replace Dennis. I don't have a nomination, if you will, to replace him. Obviously, we need Connie and Kathy to get together and figure out who that's gonna be and let us know who they think can help them work together. So, the motion would be to replace Dennis with a name to be determined that Kathy and Connie need to get together and figure out who's gonna replace him.
I'll second.
Just making my notes. Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the board?
Do you have a timeframe?
I, I, I know it's short notice. If Kathy needs that much help, hopefully they can figure something out before our next meeting. They've been, I put him on notice to try to find someone. So, maybe they'll have some names to bring forward at our next meeting. If not, they'll be able to give us an idea where they stand.
Well, that kind of leaves it up in the air. Do you wanna put a, a limit? I mean, I don't know what are open items. I, I really don't. And unfortunately, the clerk isn't here, this has been a vacation since then for some time. So, I don't know what open items there are. So, I mean, one, you have to say, he's not too dark in our doorway again, is one thing. That's the one we cut off, we'll not spend another penny on him. To say, wait until Kathy and Connie come up with a mutually agreed upon replacement, we all wanna be here with your next term, that's fine.
That's the key. And I think the only way to do that, unfortunately, at this point, Gordy, is to say, I'm sorry, Dennis, we're done. We, we, at this point, your services aren't working for Acme Township. We need to replace you. Thanks for your help, what you did do, but we're moving in a different direction and be done with Dennis.
And Paul, I think that was made clear at our last meeting. 'Cause this was the time that we gave to get to this meeting. I mean, I feel like we've been hashing this for two months now.
And it's been stretched along a couple of times.
And it's been stretched along and stretched along, and now we're gonna stretch it along more. When something's not working, it's been two and a half months, if you don't even include however long before that. So, I mean, I guess, I don't know, your motion, I seconded it, there was no date, so I can't change that.
Exactly. And, and my motion was, as I mentioned, let that go.
Let me ask you, appreciate, a different question. Connie's gonna wanna hear something, wanna answer it, Connie. If we have a motion like that, what's the timeframe, which region? Based on spring break coming up, everything else, which region?
Well, we've already interviewed one person and she was willing. It's, it's been going on, you know, she's probably, I don't know if she's even willing, it's been a couple of months now. Sometimes when you put that pressure on, it makes you do it. If we just keep hanging on with Dennis, there's no reason to look for anybody else. So, you know, if, if we, you know, if we eliminate Dennis, then perhaps that means we'll hustle to find a replacement.
I, maybe I'm asking you a different question. If you don't mind me asking you a different one. Unfortunately, Kathy's gone this week, she just, are you gone in the next three weeks, two weeks? And that's, and that's a personal question, maybe, I don't need it aimed at that way, but there is, I, I've tried to...
Is there a time when you guys can meet?
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Between now and our next meeting, that year or...
April, or something. Is there? I mean, if there's not time, we oughta, we oughta make sure we allow it for those kind of...
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Any other?
And, and in all fairness, Gordy, if you wanna put a date on it, that would be unfortunately effective right now. I think we need to let Dennis know, thank you for your service, it's not working. By our next meeting, we need to have a recommendation, if possible, of who his replacement will be, that hopefully Connie and Kathy can agree upon. I would like to add that to my motion, I guess, if you're okay with adding that.
Okay, so if Dennis is done today?
Yeah.
And we're gonna have a recommendation by the end?
So, we're not gonna, no more available hours?
No more available.
Okay, and that's what you're saying? So, he's gone?
Whatever he's done up to this point, obviously, he'd be paid for.
Right, right.
And then he's done as of today. I mean, I just feel like we've talked so much. And I don't think that, I mean, I feel like Kathy has been in on those conversations. So, it's not like I feel like I'm blindsiding her. Unfortunately, she's not here. 'Cause that's not my intent either, 'cause I blind her...
Everybody needs a vacation, though, so that's a...
That's why I'm like, I'm not, so I understand that. And so, I just don't want, but I also think we've gotta rip off the Band-Aid because we gotta move forward and...
Do it, does anybody, Connie said they have interviewed a lady. I have never interviewed anyone, I'm going, that's fine. Do we, we have any other candidates to suggest to us as a board?
Well, what I suggest you do, I mean, it's a foregone conclusion, I'm lying, I've got some comments on it, which will probably rile a few people up, but, um, it's a foregone conclusion that Dennis is, for whatever reason, has different views, isn't working out. I think what you need to do before you go to another person is come up with what the expectations are. So, you sit down with the person, and everyone agree, if you're gonna bring another person in, these are the tasks that they're gonna perform, et cetera. And then ask the person, are you qualified to do these? And are these the tasks you wanna do? And then move on from there. But right now, to interview somebody, if Connie interviewed him, there'd be probably one, one set of directions. If Kathy interviewed him, there'd probably be some other requirements. If Jay interviewed the person, there might be some other things. So, I think the three of you need to sit down and come up with a list of what the expectation is of what this person's gonna deliver going forward as the township's accountant.
Well, I guess that's the question. Are we, this is something we just did as a placeholder in our budget last year for getting Kathy up to speed. So, are we talking about this being an ongoing line item that we pay for over and over and over?
I think let's resolve the question at hand, the motion at hand, and then we can talk about those questions.
So, can we develop, as Gordy suggested, a list?
Again, I, I think we, I think we answer the motion at hand and then decide how we're gonna move forward from that. There's a motion and a second, I think we should take a vote on that and then we can talk about what we're gonna do from then.
Any other discussion?
I'm gonna ask the audience, any discussion in the audience on this? It's been some in previous meetings, so we, we try to be very open to listen. You might always do what you want. And, and I would like, I would like to make a comment first. In the, in the government entity we work in, there's things that happen, like people talking about earlier, what I can do. This is not something I can go tell Connie, go do this anymore. Connie tells me, go do that, or Kathy. So, this is one we have to work appropriately. It's not, it's different than in private business where if you're in a boss, you kinda get people together and you can demand what they do. This is government and it doesn't allow us that. It's not part of the charters and the act. We try to work together on things, and there's times we will push each other a little bit one way or the other. And on this bid, Connie and I have been going back to it. What do we do? What do we think? You know, we have opinions, people. So, that's part of why it is a difficult task to get things done sometimes. Is there any other comments on this? Chuck, please.
Did anybody say anything good about this fellow?
I think he did a good job in bringing our books to par. Our books are, I believe, in the best shape they've been in a while.
And Kathy has said she, that he helped her enormous.
Yes, so for the transition, going from one clerk to a different clerk, I think he had, you know, from Christine starting to Christine leaving to Kathy coming on, he's brought her a long way in that understanding process. So, this is in no way, in my opinion, on his ability to do work, at least from what I've seen. Okay, Chuck? And no, not on him.
Okay, then this is really turning into a personality thing that we can't work together. And this goes back to what I was speaking to when we had the original comments. We've got to drop some of the personality things and do our job, turn around, go home, and be with our family. But do our job. I've had a lot of people working in my organizations over the year that I hired that I didn't get along with personally, but I knew they were the best for the job. And I put up with them for that.
Yes, I, I think that our, the board, at least, positioned, talking about Dennis, if we've got a motion, the auditors have been happy, a lot of them have, this is not about the work happiness, in my mind. Dennis, we've changed in direction, we're looking at a new way. That's the question.
But it doesn't seem to me, Jay, like you're changing direction. You're going to change direction by getting this individual out of the line. You're gonna hire somebody else to do basically the same thing? Is this what I'm hearing?
Well, I don't know.
No, that's, that's why I said we need to talk about that next, Chuck. Because I agree with you. To hire someone to do the exact same thing that Dennis was doing is not right either. And I think that we needed to get Kathy the help that she asked for, which we did by hiring Dennis. Connie made mention, and I don't know where this stands, I, I haven't asked Kathy, but she knew someone that would help get some policies in place to do what Dennis has done. Now that we're at a point where that person can take a solid stance, Dennis brought us to a great position, now we need someone to tell Kathy how to go forward from there, from what I understand.
Has anybody sat down with Dennis to let him know?
I mean, put something in place. That's what we're deciding right now.
No, you're deciding to fire him instead of talk with him and resolve the problem.
Because, because the problems haven't been resolved.
But why not? Whose problem is it? Whose job is it? To resolve the problem. That's what I'm getting. I hate to see somebody else come on and we have to start up over again, so to speak, and bring a person up to speed when you've already got somebody that potentially is up to speed.
Let me make a, I don't know. I suddenly was aware that it was gonna come to a vote to terminate the relationship with this accountant. And to be realistic, I realized the vote was there to make it happen. But it's amazing how we, there's a revision of, of history. When he was brought in, and I was the driving force to bring him in, because we were in the tank. And if anyone wants to debate that with me, I can get into real numbers of how screwed up things were. We brought him in on a recommendation of two people. Supervisor at East Bay and supervisor at Garfield. He had been brought in to those townships. East Bay, as you recall, had some real issues a few years ago. And he was brought in and they gave him a very high recommendation. He's still working there and doing the job. He wasn't brought in just to train somebody. He was brought in to maintain their operation as an independent accountant. The same thing in Garfield. Bigger staff, more, more seasoned. They feel a need to have him come in and do a set of tasks as an accountant, not above and beyond training. So, his role, in my opinion, in the township was first and foremost, help us get out of the mess. We went through a transition of three clerks in a short period of time, and we just needed a person to almost pitch in and do the job. Hopefully, there was training involved in that. And then he would go more to the support position of, on an ongoing basis, similar to East Bay. And again, that means, I'd like to find out, what do we expect going forward? But I find it very comforting to have an independent accountant who isn't in the treasurer's office or who isn't in the clerk's office looking at the books and assist, doing some work in reconciliation. I mean, if you talk to the auditors...
Gordy, if, if they were looking at both books, that would be right, but obviously, there's a problem with half of the books, where they don't, they aren't able to work with at least half of that equation, so they're not doing what you're telling everyone he is. So that's why I have a problem with it. If we had a person that could do that, I agree. That's what we want. Obviously, there's some personality issues that create it, so that isn't gonna happen, no matter what we try to do.
I think I had, excuse me, I think I had the floor.
We have a motion and a second.
No, no, no.
We're in a comment, those sessions.
Just comment. I can talk as long as I wa, I like before you have a vote. You can speak after me, but please don't interrupt. I was probably more involved in that process. I've, I don't, have you ever met him?
I have not.
Okay. I was involved in that process. I, I, the reason I ran is because of concerns of the books. So I was instrumental in getting into it, and I still think that this will be another debate about going forward, do we need a professional accountant in the operation, and I firmly believe we do. Now, I'm gonna make a comment, and I'm sorry that the lady there that said, you know, we should all work together, and on and on, that's the most important thing.